Makes of agreement in the previous meetings.
Very good.
Even by ourselves.
Good evening, everybody. We are live. Welcome to the second February planning committee meeting. Before we start the business, we do have a public speaker, Paula.
Yes, we do.
Right.
It's Mr. Magoboyna, if I've got my name right.
Yeah. Thank you very much. You have three minutes, Mr. Magoboyna, please.
Sorry, can I stand here?
Sorry.
Can I stand here?
Yeah, please. Just so everyone can see you, so.
So I'm here to, thanks for this all, particularly in the first place. So I'm here to talk about my application that's been put forward. So this is with regards to a carport and a little area of this, and then two. So I moved to Buckingham some of 2023. But it's got two car parkings provided by the developer. So I have only one car in the house, so my wife doesn't drive, so I, because I work for them all the time. So I thought I would, I was wondering if I could convert that into a office, because I would still be left with one car park. I consulted the builders and I found one local builder who led me to believe that this wasn't a public development, because it's just a garage conversion, already there, building construction and all that. So he's post-application and then he started on the work. But basically, he got consensus from my neighbours and thought that, to be honest with you, I should have done my predictions. So I went and received advice from the planning committee. Again, I totally, utterly want to speak to you at some point, so I should have done that, oversight on my part. So I only left your car and I charged during the night time of green light between midnight and five o'clock. So on a couple of occasions, I left it charging and had it, um, do some of the footpath. Maybe, uh, may have upset some of the residents and I think they also complained that was actually the enforcement or council. So we had an officer visit us, that's when I realised what was going on. And we asked the builder what's going on, so he said, you can just go and create a perspective application. And he did the application for me back in September. And so I think the application didn't go well, because he provided some drawings for the model acceptable, basically, screenshot, strong, small. So I'd been contacted back and then I just got the actual architectural drawings for me. So basically, I had about 4.3 metres of space after the, after the car conversion. But then somehow it was misrepresented and action figures, which I came to see just recently, from the notes that were sent to you, was that it was just 2.2 metres, which was something that was completely unacceptable. So it looked as if I'd taken two car parks and just ended up with nothing. Then, after I had the visit, I was in India for about two months during this period, so. I was not able to represent myself and I was going to some other confidence. After I came back to the UK, I called the planning department and I said, it was not 2.5 metres, it's 4.3, a compromise on my car. Appreciate that it's standard about 4.85. Then the officer told me that if I could demonstrate one car park, maybe they would just consider this. This is the reason why I made an application, so I also, that would be considered as free application. He said that they can't, I mean, what happened already, there's no immediate action on there, it has to be the application.
They've got to have all seconds.
Reason why I did this. So I was looking to believe that I can just, there was some nick and niggles along in that. Some issues that we have, which I'd like to further information on, but I was like, to believe it has to come from the planning, not something that you can consider. And so, so probably get in touch with them. I saw this on Friday and the reason why I just wanted, it's really, I don't know. I reached out to the planning and just thought I would do this. I also emailed them, copied them when I simply can.
Thank you. Yes, you'll appreciate, we can't consider those because they're not yet on the planning portal.
So I can do the process.
Um, thank you very much. Wait, wait, wait off a moment. If anyone has any questions? No, well.
I could just say that retrospective planning, we have to just take it on what is there as it is. So that's what we'll be doing it on, unfortunately.
In all of those notes, I think the officer said, the bed, the flowerbed area, which was not accounted for, is about 20 metres. So basically, he says, I doubt it's 2.2 metres, whatever. I'm not sure whether the buyer is it or how they got to that contribution. What I try to do is measure it up, I took some photographs, videos and attached that to the mail and sent it saying, it's indeed 5 metres that we have for this car park. So I believe they have done, they will reach out to me, because I've already made them say, any information, any further information, I'm happy to comply and do what's needed for me. So the premise of this application is to make up for that 5 metres, as advised by the planning officer after the visit.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question? No? Actually, you are welcome to stay and you can hear what the committee discusses and decides, but you won't be able to take part in any, any further debate. Thank you very much. In that case, we can move on to the meeting then. We will hear that your application first, it was the first on the list, so you won't have to wait for them. Thank you. So we start with apologies for absence, Paula. Full house tonight. Declarations of interest, received declarations of any personal prejudicial interest under consideration on this agenda.
Robin, I always declare interest in vain, hope that one day we'll have a planning debate, about Buckingham.
Thank you. No, Matt?
On the same grounds, I don't particularly expect these will go to committee, but just in case.
Thank you. Everyone noted? Thank you. Minutes to agree the minutes the planning committee held on the 3rd of February. Everyone happy with those, if you're on through record? Um, reading the show notes. Anybody in favour? Thank you. Robin, you voting or?
No, fine.
Minutes, in a minute.
Oh, a minute, yeah.
It is, you know. Right, planning applications. For members' information, the next show, your Buckinghamshire Council North Buckinghamshire Planning Area Committee meetings are on Wednesday, the 5th of March, and 16th of April 2025. Strategic science on Thursday, March 13, and September 15. Right, we move on to planning applications. The first one is the retrospective application for 27 Osborne Road. Householder application for conversion carport study washroom, three state parking space, retrospective. You will be aware that this has been refused by the local planning authority on the grounds that it's, the house does not, the property does not have enough parking for the number of bedrooms. They are saying 2.5 for three or four bedrooms. The household has filled in the carport, which would accommodate two cars and wants to put the car in front of the work that's been done, but it will be overhanging part of the pavement. And the minimum length for the cars now under, they have, as the local plan, is five metres. We're aware that probably it's only three to four metres within the car village. So what do members feel about this application? Karen, Buckingham society.
Yes, thank you, Jim. And we've obviously seen this application in roundabout form before. And I have to say that we do not change our opinion in that we would like to object to it, notwithstanding what the applicant is saying. And we feel that this sets a precedent for this street. The whole estate was carefully designed with a lot of inputs coming from town council and the society. And it does set a precedent that we think is unfortunate. Apart from the fact that it does remove a vital car parking space. If everyone did this, the streets should be overrun with cars. So we would wish to object on the basis of the street scene is impacted and the parking issues we think would be exacerbated.
Yeah, just interestingly, highways, we'll ask for their comments and they have no comment on it.
Yes, I noted that.
That said, the application would not have a material impact on safety or parking provisions. Has no objections.
I questioned whether the highways officer ever visited.
Basically, the same, it's the last, it's the last time.
Exactly.
Yeah. Lucy?
Just, there are several houses on that estate where a garage makes up, a closed garage yard in the carport makes up one of their car parking spaces. And those are very rarely used and it's already caused a large amount of vehicles to be parked on the road. Because they're not being there, I'm a car parking spaces. And while I do understand what the applicant is saying, that he only has one vehicle. It does set a precedent and where the applicant able to move, that would then potentially cause an issue moving forwards.
Yeah.
Yeah, as the applicant said, he only has one car, but when the house is sold, there will still won't be enough spaces.
Yeah, yeah.
That does create a precedent for the future. Fran?
Thank you. I agree with what councillor Japer says. The AVDC local plan is quite stringent in its car parking spaces per household, size of the house. We've got too many places in and around Buckingham where car parking spaces weren't considered because there weren't so many vehicles on the road when they were built. I think that to support the loss of car parking spaces in homes would be detrimental to the town in general.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anthony?
Yeah, the, the pathway that runs through, I'm advised, is actually a public right of way, because it was before the estate was built and was subtly altered to allow it to run along the pathway. So that makes it particularly sensitive to any obstruction, however modest, i.e. cars outside the curtilage of cars that were joining. I also picked up the point that when we look at all these plans, what the current owner or whoever is able to do today, we must assume that sooner or later the house will be vacated and somebody else will come in. And these, these agreements and plans must stand the test of time and consequently, somebody else may come along. And as it stands at the moment, even if the household has mitigated the length, serving for his own vehicle, it seems to me it would require two cars side by side to fulfil the criteria for a three-bedroomed house. And it is still not wide enough, because they are, I believe, 2.8 wide each. Therefore, something over five metres and there isn't five metres of parking space. And even if they just about was, how on earth do you get out of cars and open doors? So all in all, I think it's, unfortunately, it's, it's not a practical and acceptable solution.
If no one else has anything to say, I therefore propose we continue to oppose this application. I take, I do realise it is a second application, so we oppose it on the same grounds as the first one. And we know that the opposite reason for refusal was the provision of no off-street car parking spaces would fall significantly below the optimal car parking standards set out within the val, which outlines 2.5 spaces for a three-bedroomed dwelling. And no justification regarding specific local circumstances has been put forward to justify deviating from those standards. All those in favour? Thank you.
You don't have to be second now.
Yeah. That ended was there. Is it everybody except the two?
I believe so, Tim. Everybody except what I know.
Thank you. So that is, thank you very much for attending tonight. Right, and item two then on the agenda, it's 46th, this is a single story front and rear extensions, garage conversion to habit space. Operations through certain materials on the front elevation.
Can I remind everybody we're live and in a meeting? Sorry, point four.
Sorry. Someone's speaking. Oh. I was too busy talking.
As you're allowed to, Tim.
So operations through certain materials on the front elevation, due to a demonstration operations. People see Catherine's report. This was a previous application, which is just coming up to three years now, which was approved and we have no objection to. So it's just really tidying up what we approved to previously. Karen, would you?
Certainly have no objections. Seems a fairly acceptable extensions.
Thank you. Anyone else got any comments? John?
Anything against the flat roof is good in my books, really. Actually, they're always best.
Thank you. Nobody else? In that case, I propose that we have no objection seconded by Anthony. All those in favour? That's everybody, with the exception of our two chair councillors. Right, and then finally, that came quickly. Finally, item three and four may be taken together. It's removal of the curved bay window, shop windows, multiple glazing bars at Nine Market Street, which was a previous RSPCA shop. Catherine did a lot of work on this and looking at books and photographs of Buckingham, certainly in the early part of 1900s, it was flat fronted windows. It was the Elsbury Brewery Company's off licence. Elsbury Brewery Company at that time had 19 pubs in the town, but they sold extras from this shop. And the proposal is to remove the rotting bay window and replace it with the original, in the style of the original, simplified glazing frontage to match the original fenestration design. So good detective work, Catherine. Thank you very much. Lucy?
Well, I've always loved the curved windows on that shop, and I remember when it was an art shop. I fully understand the difficult, A, how rotten they are, and B, the difficulties there would be in restoring the curved bay, the curved windows as they are. So I think potentially the plan is a reasonable one. They said they're going to add heritage grade double glazing, which will obviously, that would then reduce things like heating costs and so would be more environmentally friendly. I think this is all Buckingham society, I'm sure, but then I was thinking again.
Sorry. I sort of echo what councillor saying, but isn't it extraordinary how you grow so used to something, even though it's only been there for a matter of 80 years? You sort of think, what? What? Why has this been removed? But yes, Lucy, I remember it as a wine shop, actually, before, the wine and coffee shop before it was an art shop. So I've lived with it for 45 years, basically. And the thought of a change is, was a little disturbing. But we did discuss this at some length and agreed it was originally on a different level. And we totally understand the rottenness of the timbers. And at least they are replacing it, I believe, with timber frames. And we do not feel that it will actually, apart from old times like myself, actually hinge on the street scene. So we have, in the end, no objections.
Thank you. I'm John Len Martin.
Um, yeah, I support the application, because having looked at it a little bit as well and been to it a little, I guess, Catherine's put together. My only caution is, is there some way of at least keeping the smaller sized windows? I guess probably not. But also, whenever this decision is made, it should always be subject to the Heritage Building Officer, the Shire Council, so subject to your mind suggestion.
Thank you. Martin?
Well, we call it progress, don't we? You know, things are meant to change, maybe for the better and for us to get used to. So considering there's another premises next door with those small square windows, albeit it's not bade, but at least have a corner on them at an angle. I think progress should be that if we like it and it's been there a substantial amount of time, why don't we love it and want to keep it, rather than just saying, yeah, well, it was flat before. Well, before that, there wasn't anything there. So let's block the whole thing down and go back to farmland. You know, how far do you want to go back, really, just to make a point, to make it to fit in? So if you want to change it and if it's easier for them, because nothing's out of the impossible, especially in this area of, of windows, then yes, make them flats with, but the small six by four, whatever, so that at least it's in keeping. It gives something that comes into the town, something that comes into the town, something different to look at. It's, you know, it looks interesting. It may not be practical for the owners or expensive, whatever. But it's how it has been for quite a while. So I would prefer it to be still bowed, but it's not kept with the small panes throughout.
Thank you.
And that's my proposal.
Also, I'm a con person. No, we haven't heard of America, so.
No comments, whatever.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, I think the small panes are very important to be retained. Whether the, the windows are bowed or, or flat, the proposed shop front doesn't look in keeping your character with the rest of the shops in the area. But yeah, I'm like, things, things, things sometimes have to change, things sometimes have to move on. I noticed a little while ago, there used to be a shop frontage in Toaster on the main street, which looked like it was about to collapse into the road at the hard time. And they've managed to do something with that in order to make it so that it's not looking like it's going to collapse into the road at, at any time. It was, I'm like, small pains of, of a bowed, bowed front window of, of a shop, I can't remember which one it was. There are ways of doing these things. Yeah, I'm not sure whether I'd want it to go, go back to being flat or whether it would, would be better to be staying bowed, but I do think that some panes need to be retained.
Thank you. Catherine?
I will point out that the shop, the other side, the left-hand side, as you look at the set, is the barbers, which has flat panes. It's a bay window, because it's a brick bay, but they are single, like, panes, undifferentiated, replacing glass.
So the feeling I'm getting from the meeting is that we'd be happy if it was flat, provided the window, but we had small windows, again, smaller.
Six by four.
But anyway, Jane?
Oh, I'm more for the 1914, the larger flats, I think would be more interesting. This is all a bit dinky and a bit sort of pseudo, pseudo Georgian and I'm not really, we're not, we're not really pseudo Georgian in Buckingham.
That's true.
That's it, yes. I'd rather have the flat. I like, I like the idea of going, actually, it's flat, actually, a few more. The only thing I do, I pause amazingly, is this quotation from a biopic by Mark Iam. I wonder, I wonder what that was all about. Maybe past it's 70s, so lots of everything is that.
Is there anything after precious the business sells and I come back over the rest?
Something like that, yeah. By wonder was interesting.
I wonder what will the business buy once?
Well, half as much as what they produce or something.
Or what they sell.
Apparently, it is a quote from the, whatever.
Yes.
I'm sorry, we're at the 70%. The wine shop before that, it was actually others, where I was a stout. Not the second.
Now, is that John?
I see the original.
I think if they're using the old format to justify taking away the bay, the main window, looking at the photographs as they were, it isn't quite in matching with what they're proposing. I'm also noticing as well that the windows above on the first and indeed on the second floor are smaller panes as well. I, I just think there should be some nod towards that, notwithstanding that the Old Town shop has large panes, the barber shop has large panes. But I think we should throw that into the mix if we possibly do.
Karen?
Can I just sort of comment a bit on that? I think the old photograph shows that there is a sort of crossbar by the third of the way down. And that seems to be.
And there's an arch at the top of the windows as well.
Would make a very good compromise, because 19th century buildings such as this, with a shop on the ground floor, would have had black panes, such as is shown in the photograph. So I don't think it's a retrograde step.
Thank you. Interesting debate.
You have a proposal from Martin.
All right, we normally don't take notes in the chairs, but if somebody wants to make it.
But Martin's made a different proposal.
Yeah.
Yeah, I propose that whether it be bay or straight, that they keep the six by four panes there.
Okay. Maybe have a second of that. John? Thank you. Right, you're quite clear on that, Catherine. Thank you. So we'll put that to note then. And that will be subject to the Heritage Office's satisfaction. Thank you. All those in favour of the proposal?
So that's seven, I think, I've got that's my answer.
Yep.
Yep, so.
That's those against? Two against and extensions? Two extensions, three extensions.
Three, chairman, could somebody send me the literature book? I've never read the book.
I'll read by a very well count.
It's all, it's all, you know, it's all French for me and I don't speak French either, so.
Well, he's Polish, so.
In which case I don't speak either.
But remember, this, we are live on, uh. Thank you very much. Right, planning decisions. Everything that we supported was approved, which is quite unusual. Planning inspectorate, the appeal against refusal of the application to very condition four of the Hymo 36 Candice Road was dismissed by the inspector. The inspector concluded that the landlord wanted the property to retain its Hymo status, but the kitchenettes, which he noted had already been installed, had to be removed. They're not, presumably, the local planning authority can insist they are still contained units and demand on immediate parking standards in line with the val policies. So waiting to watch that one. It's in the, the front part's occupied, isn't it? Yeah. So that's going to be to know. So if anyone sees anything left. Item six, action reports, just regular action updates, not just anything. Item seven, chairs announcements, but information only, just two announcements. This week on Wednesday, the appeal hearing into Site Q starts at Elsbury. It's a two-day, possibly three-day hearing. I'll be attending the first two with Liamy Hayne from our town centre, town plan advisors. And on the go, it comes to Friday, then Anthony will very kindly explain for me. It's an informal hearing, not a full inquiry. We will be there, may not necessarily be on the floor with everyone else, but we will be at the meeting and we might, hopefully, will be invited to speak at Buckingham's case for it. Fran?
Yeah, can I just ask what the informal nature of that meeting or, or thing actually means? Does it mean that it's, it's not going to be?
Minuted.
It's not a full-blown planning inquiry. It's, it's normally, I keep timing costs down on these things. Apparently, the applicants are going to have a barrister, but Buckinghamshire Council won't, they'll use their own in-house solicitors.
I'm not the full set of experts and things, so they'll be on the paperwork. Four sets of experts and things, so they'll be on the paper.
Um, yeah. Robert?
Thank you for what you said. I think it's quite worth noting that that, that obviously we can imagine that the in-house staff are going to be um, as good as the barrister. So, um, I think it's very worrying really, um, that, that this is town council put a lot of work into its neighbourhood plan and supported by the Valt and citing everybody else. And the fact that it's, it, this into your explanation, that it's a informal, is this going to be public? Is there going to be ability to scrutinise those decisions thereafter? Because this defines the outcomes of this will define the um, longevity of employment in Buckingham. So, um, I'm disappointed that, um, they spent ten million pounds on legal fees that they couldn't spend a bit on Buckingham, um, to defend it because um, a specialist barrister will always be, um, well equipped. And I'm disappointed to, to hear from you, Chair, that they're just using the in-house staff because and we're limited in what we could say. And it's even been shortened to a informal, not a formal inquiry. And I'm just find it strange because it's, not only is it a major application, it, the major application gets a local development plan. So I, I, it doesn't, doesn't sound as robust as I would have liked it to be. Although I have every doubt that the officers will put their endeavours into defending the Vale of Arsh Plan under Buckingham neighbourhood plan, but, um.
Yeah, just to be absolutely clear, this, this is, the appeal is against the decision of Buckinghamshire Council as the local planning authority, not, not us. We the refusal was given because we opposed it and the refusal was given because we were defending our neighbourhood plan.
Yeah, I, I just lastly came to say that, um, it took a long time to get it to committee in the first place. And, um, we didn't look like we were going to get to the committee. The town council pulled it in. One called it in and eventually it went to committee, but not because of the free line way called. I think it got there because of the local neighbourhood plan issue. And as I took part in the meeting, um, and, and the decision to refuse it, um, I'm, I'm I'm very concerned. I don't know through you, um, and the class quite, what, what, if there's a decision at the end, Louis, quite where, where we would go and what the town planning advisor would be on that decision because it means we have no debt, we have no industrial land for future growth in Buckingham, which would be an absolute um, tragedy for the people.
That's exactly why we're planning it all.
Yeah.
That's, that's not the first one. I don't want to say too much more about it because, you know, it's the public meeting and we want to be better to our public rights.
I would say, Chair, whilst it is informal, as in if somebody sat around at the table, um, and wrote through written submissions and given their case, it's still amazing, I think, and the public are, are welcome to attend.
Yeah, thank you.
And the decision will be about a month. They don't say on Friday night. Yeah, that's it. He, he goes away.
Go away and study and.
So listen to.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, funny, I think you can't just actually just a, a touch of reassurance that from our point of view, i.e. Buckingham Town Council point of view, we will have with us some expertise in terms of our consultants who specialise in this sort of work. And they are very aligned to the relevant points in the case. And I'll say no more about the relevant points in the case. And so consequently, whilst it's certainly, she won't be wearing a wig or, or being like that very aligned to announce this sort of thing and very experienced. The individual is very experienced, let alone the company. So uh, that will help us.
Very good. Thank you, thank you. Right, the only other chairman's announcement, um, next Monday, we have the town of parish planning forum, which is an online one this time. Um, we do have the opportunity to put questions to it at this stage, um. I wonder if anyone might have a burning question they want asked at that meeting?
Well, would it be appropriate to ask them um, in the new council, will they ever be considering any Buckingham occasions that accrue to the committee? Um, as I have, I'm not on a normal occasion, um, without a free member calling or, uh, or one in that. Would it be possible to ask them how they, will they, uh, how they envisage the new constitution? Um, um, being against it all even because I think it's important to know what the laws are for the town council in the new, um, thing. Having took a motion to Buckinghamshire Council to change the constitution to allow parishes to actually have a voice. I'm very disappointed that we're the only parish that never gained from that motion, um, to allow parish to have a voice because, um, um, the um, constitution and the council and various people in the, in the ashions of their decisions prevented it. But we did give the voice to, um, loads of other places, Winslow, Buckingham, um, and Great Awur and Padbury and different places who managed to have application, um, before committee. So and we did a service from here. It wasn't the town council asked to have it, the constitution claims. I think the town council should take credit for it, even though I actually took most of the council. It was only because the town council asked.
Yeah, that's.
Because we didn't ask what they proposed to do about the constitution.
Yeah, I guess we're very committed.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Much, much to get a question out of that.
Yeah, it's fun, isn't it? We do have to wait quite a long time for answers. I asked a question in November about why would chairman and vice chairman of the planning committee be involved in delegated um, decisions together with an officer? And they came back and said, whoops, that's a mistake. We just had to reply last week. In the future, it will be restricted to just the chairman um, and an officer or the vice chairman and the chairman, you know, chairman's absence. So we've had a reply to that, which I'll report to the next full, full planning committee. Um, John?
I was simply going to say a few questions around how will the constitution have to change with regards to calling because of the new, um, law structure?
Yeah.
Good point. It clearly, it clearly no longer comes.
That's a good, good reason to ask it. Thank you.
Yeah, excellent.
If, if everyone's happy, then I will, we will frame a question and I'll, and put that to the, uh, these are written questions that we guarantee and answer them.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Just to say, thank you very much for getting an apology out of Buckinghamshire Council.
I, 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 I think, I think you should be nominated, I would be either that. Um, I think it's an O B would be a most suitable award for that.
Um, well, that, I know, thanks for that.